I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on into our consensus agenda.
All right, I move that we approve the vouchers and the payrolls for last month. They total nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. Along with that, I recommend we approve the minutes from our last meeting. Actually, maybe last two meetings, I'm not sure.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's a move by Steve, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh. Patrons comments? Does anyone here have a comment so far? All right.
Saving it for later.
Saving it, there you get two chances. On to personnel.
All right, I'd like to begin with the extracurricular activity approval. Recommend the approval of the winter coaches as listed in the board packet.
Move we approve the coaches as listed in the board packet.
Second.
Was that Wes? Okay, it was moved by Steve, second by Wes. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Next, I'd like to recommend the approval of Rachel, Mrs. Watkins, as the winter, spring, and summer weight room supervisor.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Kevin, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
The next two recommendations are a little bit of an adjustment from the beginning of the fall coaching recommendations, so I'm going to recommend the approval of Riley Linville as the boys tennis head coach. And this is for pay purposes, and then for, recommend Caitlin Linville as the boys tennis assistant coach. Both of them have fulfilled those duties, we're just bumping them up as we had. Brad did not want to accept that pay, which we had originally scheduled him as the head coach on that. So he made the request that we pay the other two accordingly, and we accepted that request.
I'll make that motion, second.
It's been moved by Kevin, second by Austin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
All right, I'm excited under certified staff to recommend the approval of Jill Rackley. If you recall, she was doing her student teaching in Mrs. Phoenix's class this semester. Has proved herself to be the best candidate, best fit candidate for the remaining, the remainder of the year in the first grade classroom for Ms. Pearson. Once again, if you recall, Terry Large and Janelle Bonträger, who took that in the first semester, just did an awesome job. So they're leaving that in really good hands. She, over the next couple of weeks, will shadow them, and then will start on her own the week after Thanksgiving. Her student teacher is officially up. So we will give her, eventually give her a contract for the remainder of that time. But I'm excited for her to have earned that position and get a year under her belt for, yeah, after her student teaching, so.
I move we approve that contract.
I'll second that.
This move by Steve, second by Wes. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Thank you. I'm going to recommend the next three items here, because they're all kind of under the collective bargaining agreement and/or shared leadership, so I recommend the approval of the collective bargaining agreement that last Monday night we had public comment on. So excited, that was a smooth process, a very respectful process, and I appreciate the teachers association for going through that with us. I recommend the administrator contracts, contracts, excuse me, administration contracts and the shared leadership stipends.
We approve all of those contracts and stipends and bargaining agreements?
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Wes, second by Austin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh. I would like to recommend the approval of Mr. Riffle superintendent contract for the next year.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved, any discussion? It's been moved by myself, seconded by Kevin. All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Thanks, Roy, you did your.
Thank you very much. I recommend the following classified positions, Alex Howdeschell as a full-time bus driver, so he just got approved and is fitting right into a route. So awesome timing there. Brooke Baumgartner as a substitute teacher, and Sierra Hart as a crossing guard.
Move we approve those as presented? Second.
This has been moved by Steve, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Just to clarify, Sierra will start after Christmas break. She's actually taking Casey Yarborough's position. So I didn't clarify that to begin with, but she's, she was interested in that before and was still interested in that now. So she'll be doing that after Christmas break. Last but not least, sorry, did you, got that? Okay, corporation-wise, I'd recommend the approval of the revised two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six weight scales as presented in the packet.
Revised weight scales?
Second.
The move by Austin, second by Wes. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh. On to other business.
I'd like to recommend the approval of, we've done this the past few years, but continue when to come to the board for the recommendation of approval for providing transportation for the Nappany Missionary Church camps for the summer of two thousand twenty-six.
I move we approve that as presented to us.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Recommend the approval of the quote from Cider's Asphalt for crack fill and seal coat of all parking areas. That's going to take a little bit of logistic work on when they're going to do that, but every parking lot, every area on campus will be paved, sealed and paved, starting springtime, possibly spring breakish.
Schedule, if not, we can hold off till summer break, but. Add a significant price difference from a lot of the others, so we're excited about that. Has done, very reputable, has done a lot of the other schools around our area as well.
And then what's our plan? How often are we going to keep doing that?
So we, we were on a rotation, but based on the dependability of the last, we ended up skipping one. So I think we tried to do one each year and to kind of do on a three-year rotation. But that, I think our hope would be eventually to get back on a rotation, but sometimes it's tough when you do all of it. Creates some bit of a cliff.
But typically, three years is every three.
Three years is what the rotation was. The crack filling is more important than the sealing, I've been told. So we might get back on the rotation by extending the sealing out a little bit and crack filling maybe two years. Nothing will probably be done the summer of twenty-seven. We'll do a section probably the twenty-eighth or whatever's worse.
Get back on it after.
Worse out there.
I move we approve that quote, the crack fill and seal, parking lots filled and sealed.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, second by Austin. Any discussion or any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Recommend the approval of providing bus transportation for the South Haven Amish school. They called last week and asked to have a bus driver take them caroling. So evidently Laura said they had done that in the past. So trying to be a good member of our society and take them place to place to Carol.
I move we approve that. Second.
It's been moved by Steve, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Do we have somebody to run that?
Laura says she felt like it was going to be really easy to get somebody to do that.
On to superintendent report.
All right, working under continuous improvement, I just want to draw attention back to the formal negotiations. Went smoother this year than it has in several years past, so I just want to thank our teachers association for that. This was not a process that anyone was looking forward to due to the current state of funding. Twenty-two percent increase in insurance costs, the upcoming Senate Bill One property tax legislation, and a slight decline in enrollment, it made for a tough landscape to bargain in. We were fortunate enough to get Triton to the state recommended forty-five thousand for minimum pay for starting teachers. Cushion the blow of insurance by close to approximately half. With that being said, as promised, we tried to continue to improve the starting teacher salaries, our teachers, and we appreciate the respectful collaboration that took place throughout the process. This is a two-year agreement, so we did talk about the possibility if we had an increase in students or a large decrease in student enrollment, and we needed to reopen that contract after year one, that we could do that. But in the end, it is a two-year agreement. Also knowing full well, we tried to bargain upfront the first year a little bit more because the second year is actually less money. So we felt like, as difficult as that could have been, the process was pretty smooth, and I want to thank Tom so much for, for his efforts and just working through that. Evidence-based decision-making. This is a heads up that the Triton Teachers Association and Triton admin team are working together to prepare recommendations for the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. Likely this will be brought up in the board meeting in December. One item to note is the start date due to the later Memorial Day will be a week later. That's kind of where we're landing on that. Also a note of importance to be in discussion surrounding an earlier graduation. Instead of waiting a full week after our last day of class and having it that next Sunday. Definitely discussions are being had of possibly bumping that up to the Sunday after we get done with school. So we don't need all those records days like we've had in the past. If you've noticed, the trend has been in other school corporations, that they're doing that a lot quicker and not leaving that week up to chance for kids to, there again, not that they're going to horse around and hurt themselves or anything like that, but it just minimizes that time. So please be on the lookout for more to come on this. Shared leadership, this morning was an example of shared leadership, not only within our district but within our county. Since last evening at approximately 5:00 PM, the emergency manage, emergency management director and the Marshall County Superintendent were in communication about the weather and what was happening in our districts. Because so many services and resources are shared, we were in constant communication until about 8:00 AM this morning when a decision on school needed to be made. I shared an outline of how school delays and cancellations, decisions are made on our Facebook page, especially for new families in our district, so they have a better understanding of when and how the communication will happen during weather events or school-related topics. Obviously, this morning ended up being pretty slick, but we always think about so many things during that time, our new drivers, when our buses need to leave, what that looks like. There's just a lot of things to take into account. People were awesome today, but I just wanted to send that out to say, hey, these are the steps that are taken on a daily basis. Usually, we don't have to worry about that, but obviously, on the tenth of November to get canceled because of ice and snow is pretty crazy. Social responsibility and alignment, the Triton National Honor Society and other organizations continue to serve in the Triton community. Their last service being Feed My Starving Children last week at Nappany Missionary Church. I also want to thank the local food pantries for how they continue to selflessly serve our communities, especially in the recent days when there was concern of food insecurity in our communities because of the SNAP benefits and those type of things. Accountability, two topics that are continuing to be on the minds of educators and school corporations include the new school accountability framework. I have a handout, a one-pager, that's in front of you that kind of gives you, as you can see, labeled across the middle of that. This is the second draft, so they are taking feedback on this at the state level. But you can kind of see, if many of you recall, approximately seven years ago, we would get A, B, C, D, F school grades. The last six or seven years, ever since in front of COVID, they've kind of, we were still supposed to get those, but they've been given waivers and so on. They are going to come back with a new accountability model. And that just kind of gives a framework to that, so you can see per grade level or per, you know, three or four grades at a time based on proficiency scores, based on academic progress, regular school attendance. You can see in the high school, it's very college and career focused, excuse me, which I think we're in a really, really good place on that. Work-based learning, but in the end, there's definitely some, some items on there that we'll continue to work really, really hard to, to obviously meet. Also in that packet, I included another item that's on our teachers' minds and is different this year, is the teacher appreciation grant. If you recall in years past, this was simply a lump sum of money that was given to the corporation and spread among every teacher that was either effective or highly effective. This year, they're taking more of a business model on that, which is, which has created a lot of concern among educators. And that is, they essentially say you can only give that to the top twenty percent of teachers in your district, right? And so for our corporation, that is thirteen teachers, all right? They've given us a lump sum, approximately, Tom, I believe that was thirty-four thousand dollars, I believe, that we received this week. To say that can be distributed among those thirteen teachers in various, there's three categories. There's a thirty-five hundred, there's a five thousand, and there's a seventy-five hundred, just based on criteria, based on a rubric of what those teachers are doing within the district. You can imagine both sides of this coin. One side is, it feels like it creates a lot of division, right? But if you think about, Kevin, I think of your line of work, and I think of Austin, your line of work of production, right? How effective are you within a business? It's a business model, right, that you guys are probably more used to. Just in education, we're just not as used to that. We try to spread that appreciation out on everybody, so it's definitely something new. I did fill out the job form to be part of that. But you can see actually later on in the packet, it actually shows the timeline of, of how that is rolled out. So we just found out the amount that's going to be in that this week. Not until January thirtieth, I believe, do we actually have to name those individuals and/or what they've done to essentially meet the criteria that is listed. So, so that's just kind of an update, kind of an overview of those different tiers and the recognitions that they're trying to do differently this year. We'll see how that goes. I don't see it lasting, to be honest. But we're gonna, it, it's hard for us right now to tell the state we don't want your money, right? The double-edged sword of that is, well, you guys are doing just fine, evidently you don't need our money, is the other side of that. But you can imagine how that creates some divisiveness of the other eighty percent, right?
Or you mentioned three tiers, and if I use the lowest, thirty-five hundred times thirteen is forty-five, forty-five thousand.
Yeah, good call. So we, we did that same.
You're doing over there, Tommy.
We did that same, did that same math, Mr. Boyer, and found out that if we give four seventy-five hundred, like, that's all, right? So in the end, they did give us approximately ten thousand dollars, ten thousand fewer dollars than they did even last year when they spread that among everybody. So we thought that.
Want to make sure I hear it.
Yeah, we thought that corporations, because they wouldn't take that, would create a bigger pot and would allow you to reward them, but that is not the case, so.
There's been no guidance on what to do about that.
There's been definitely.
No, don't laugh, don't laugh.
Would you like some guidance?
There's definitely been some philosophies of corporations to say, we're just going to have everybody fill out an application, and we're going to send it to the state, and they're going to decide who they want to give the money to. But there again, so we're still in discussion about that, but I did want to make you aware that if you hear about the new accountability rules, you hear about teacher appreciation grant, that gives you a little bit of snapshot of what that looks like. And there is reason to be a little frustrated with the new processes, but as we always do, we will work through it. High expectations, moving on to more positive piece here. Congratulations to our Triton volleyball team that won their regional at Homestead to earn a berth at semi-state. They had a great season and should be very proud of the effort given. Alignment, there has been concerted effort put on the building morale and positive attitude at the buildings, and I appreciate the time and effort that has been put in to that by our building-level leaders, but also thank our staff for bringing a positive attitude each day and their focus on being a good teammate. I also want to give a shout out to our kids, our students, and especially the Spirit Club for their incredible support of our students and athletics this fall. I'm hopeful that this will continue throughout our winter sports seasons into our spring season. It has been a great start to the year, and I'm confident that that will continue. Evidence-based decision-making, Triton teachers and administrators continue to utilize data to drive their instruction. Checkpoint one for I-Learn is in the books, and we are seeing some positive results compared to last year. We will use this data to inform instruction and reteach deficient skills as needed. This is a reminder for our community, this Thursday, hopefully it won't be the third two-hour delay that we have in the week, but this Thursday, November thirteenth, is a scheduled two-hour delay, Professional Development Day, Thursday. That's all I have. Be more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any patrons comments, last chance? Anyone have any questions of what you've just heard? No? All right, we will move on to building reports.
All right, well, I'm presenting tonight for Melissa, so I had told her that when we started the school year, I'd be happy to fill in for any time she wanted, and she stated that she'd save those days for snow days, since she does live a little bit away, and so here we are, November tenth, and already having a snow day. So filling in for her today, but just as Jeremy said, we continue at the elementary to focus on morale and just continue to do a lot of things with the staff to encourage just them to have a good time and to continue doing their best and continue to provide the best they can for our kids. We have a great social committee that's been doing awesome things in the teacher's lounge each week. They've been decorating, just a lot of fun, hearing a lot of laughter, and just continuing to see good things from our teachers. We challenged them at our staff meeting last week to remember that these next few months are the toughest months. So the honeymoon of the new school year is over, and as we get through these next winter months, it becomes a little bit more challenging, but we encourage them to continue to, to keep that positive attitude. I just want to thank the PTO for the haunted hallways. That was my first time attending the haunted hallways, and man, I was amazed at what a big event that is. There was a long line out the door for people to get in, and just a lot of great things that were going on there and just great attendance, so we're thankful for the PTO for all their efforts there. We also had a great staff turnout at that, so we're thankful for all the teachers and staff members who came and passed out candy they helped tear down after the event, so that was really great. So we're just appreciative of all that took place there. We had our first incentive party for our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders earlier, last, I guess, middle of last month. This is the first time that we've done that. We moved away from the Trojan Pride incentive program for four, five, and six, and shifted this year to more of an incentive model, kind of like they've been doing at the junior, senior high school. The teachers and staff just felt like they needed a change there and some, something new to incentivize the kids. So we had sixty-four percent of our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students who qualified for the incentive party. In order to qualify, you had to have good grades, you had to turn in assignments on time, you had to maintain attendance and demonstrate Trojan pride in their daily interactions at school, so that included discipline with that. We had a pizza party for the kids, and then they had an extra hour of recess, and it was a beautiful day for them to do that. So we had a good time with the kids there. We're hoping that as we continue to move into this next incentive, that we'll have more kids involved in that. Teachers in grades kindergarten through twelve have continued to meet with Melissa to write their reading curriculum. This is going well for everybody, but it's a lot of work, so they're realizing pretty quickly that they have a lot of work to do, but they're working hard. They've had a day each, each month to collaborate and work together, so that's been helpful. So they are having some time, but they definitely have, have a ways to go there, but they're doing great. For the grade levels who have started implementing that this year, Melissa says that they're already seeing an increase of anywhere from five to ten percent in the pass rate for English Language Arts on the I-Learn checkpoint one. So that was, was good results early. And she noted that students are enjoying the new curriculum and they're making great progress. Some upcoming events, tomorrow is Veterans Day. We have our Veterans Day program scheduled at eight-thirty. If for some reason we would have to delay tomorrow, then we would push that back until Wednesday. Hopefully, we can get it in tomorrow. I just want to thank Mrs. Sheetz, she's a big advocate for really celebrating this day well. And so she and I were just over at the elementary school about an hour or so, setting up the tables and chairs in the cafeterias, so we're serving breakfast for the veterans first thing in the morning. November thirteenth is a late start date, so just a reminder for that, staff will be reviewing safety updates with Officer Watkins and also continue to work on some curriculum mapping. And then on December first, our middle-of-the-year assessments will begin. So a lot of, lot of testing going on and a lot of those things, but we're just grateful for, again, good attitudes and, and good results so far. Any questions for the elementary?
All right, for the junior, senior high school, just a few things from the month of October. So on October twenty-third, we had the CTE Fair in Plymouth, and we took all of our sophomores there, and they had an opportunity to just see what was available to them as they start to schedule for next year and to see what those opportunities are. So just thanks for Plymouth for putting that on, they did a, did a really good job. It actually gave us an opportunity to see some of the new facilities that I haven't even been in, and I think it was good for the kids to see what they would be doing and where they would be doing it versus just going around and seeing different booths and, and hearing about it, so they did a really good job. October thirty-first, Melissa and myself and a, a few teachers, we went to an AI policy planning meeting. AI is definitely something that we're seeing a lot more, and it can be used for good, and I think we want to make sure that it continues to be used for, for the good. So we're, we're in the process of creating what we're going to call a responsible use policy. So that is in the works, and we hope to have, you know, that kind of rolled out for next year. Councilors have been busy doing sophomore audits, getting them scheduled for next year. November fourth, Melissa met with the junior, junior high and high school teachers for English Language Arts, and they, they did more, some more curriculum development, so, and, and again, similar to what Mason was talking about, heard a lot of really good, positive things as far as feedback from the teachers, how the kids are responding to the curriculum, and also seeing some improvement in some of our checkpoint scores, so that, that's really positive. This weekend, Saturday, we had our variety show. I just want to thank Mrs. Atkinson and Mrs. Haynes, as well as the students that got involved, and I'm sure there was a lot of other people involved as well that I'm not mentioning, but I think they had a really good time and had a good turnout, so just thanks for their, their hard work. I do want to mention the two thousand twenty-five grad rate. So that is the grad rate that the state looks at from the previous year. And that's something we've really tried to keep an eye on the last few years and making sure that our records are accurate. And as those grad reports, because a lot of those, I mean, that grad report is going to go towards our accountability. Always has in the past, and I'm, it's, I'm certain it's going to be a part of our accountability moving forward. So just making sure that we don't have students that are counting against our grad rate that shouldn't be. So just to, to give you an example, we had three students that were going against our grad rate for the two thousand twenty-five cohort, and they shouldn't have been. So we contested those three students, and there's no guarantee that they're going to remove them from your report, but they actually removed all three of our students, and that, that really came down to just really good documentation and going back to the state when given the opportunity and saying, these students should be on our report, and here's why they shouldn't be. One was a foreign exchange student, and every year we have a foreign exchange student, they're going to count against us. No reason that should be happening, but for whatever reason, we contested every year, and the state listened, so. Kudos to Kim Stetzel for just her record-keeping. Kudos to Kim Stetzel for just her record-keeping and she just gives me what I need so I can go to the state and make a case to remove those. So seventy-five students were what they were looking at for last year. We ended up having two counting against our graduation rate. One was a student that received a certificate of completion because of a special education, what her special education status was, as well as one student that was, I would say, removed because of disciplinary reasons and then they made the choice to not pursuing their education any further. So those two students should have counted against us. Well, I don't know if I should say they should, but they did. But the others were removed, so. Right, I think our graduation rate ended up like at right around ninety-seven percent. So that was, that was a pretty positive graduation rate. Just real quick on posting for the assistant principal position, we've had a good response to the posting up to this point. Currently reviewing applications for that position. I look to have interviews early December and that position, hopefully that individual's starting second semester of this school year. So like I said, currently reviewing those applications. I do want to just give a kudos to Sarah Arvison stepping into that role. She does have an interest in it, but you know, until you try something like that, you really don't know what you're getting into, but she's done amazing. She's got a lot of energy, she's got a lot of really good ideas, great communication. Going from a counselor to a, to an assistant principal, that is a huge shift, especially when you're trying to do it at the same time, depending on the time of day. But she's done a really good job and I appreciate her stepping into that role. And then also just thanks to Ashley Faulkner for, you know, working with her and, and sharing that, that workload in the counseling department. They, they've been, we've got two amazing people there, so just want to let them know that. This week, busy week. We also have Veterans Day program tomorrow. That's supposed to start at ten-twenty-five. That's going to, bulk of that is going to happen during our SLC or our homeroom time and we're hoping to wrap that up right before lunches, so that's kind of why the weird start time of ten-twenty-five. We do not have a contingency plan as of right now if we need to. Wink, wink. Just saying. On Wednesday, the twelfth, we have our incentive trip for our junior high. We are going to the bowling alley in Warsaw, so they're going to be able to bowl for a few hours. We're going to have pizza, probably some Mountain Dew towers that, you know, get them hopped up on caffeine before we come back to school. But I know it's been asked in the past, have we seen an increase in the amount of students that have qualified? I think this year we had like ten or fifteen more that qualified for this trip than they have in the past. So just kudos to the kids and the teachers for the hard work that they're doing. So I, I think there's like a hundred and five that qualified. Thursday, late start, two-hour delay on Thursday for Professional Development. So we'll be sitting down with teachers and we have a few things planned that the teachers are going to present. We call it the teacher showcase and I just ask teachers if there's anything that they want to show or showcase to their, their colleagues that has impacted their classroom. And I think we have a lot of amazing teachers that have a lot of great things to show and we need to, we need to give them the opportunity to do that. And then we will also spend some time looking at data. Saturday night, we have our semi-formal, so appreciate the, the individuals that are kind of scrambling to make that happen. We had to make some last-minute changes. We were looking at possibly moving that date, but a few people stepped in and are helping out and just appreciate their, their efforts there. The only other thing, just an upcoming event on November twenty-fifth, we have a manufacturing day. Again, that is for our sophomores and it just gives them a chance to see what industries in the area are out there as they start to make some decisions for their future. It's nice to know what the opportunities are for them in our area. So we don't have every location figured out yet, but that's, that's what we're in the works of right now. So that'd be November twenty-fifth. That's what I have unless you guys have questions.
Window closed at this point for?
It is not, no. So I think there's about another week.
We have that open, but I, I think, like I said, we've had a really good response and I don't know if that's because we waited a little while to post it, but we've also tried to get the word out there that we're looking, so.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's no other business, we.
I'm going to add one item. Just it reminded me, Nate talked about the CTE fair and all that. I had class of nineteen sixty-five Neil Young come in this week, so it was really, I guess that was just this morning. He came in last week, talked to the counselors, but that seems like a long time ago. But he came in this morning and in memory of Steve Stolti, they are, they're going to close their bank account and give two five-hundred-dollar scholarships to an individual that's in the, the trades. So have been part of CTE programs and stuff like that, but it was good to meet Neil, given me a lot of history and, and conversations about just his time here in their class and just how they wanted to do that in memory of Steve Stolti, who I believe drowned the week before graduation. Yeah, so.
Came out of the water and bumped his head on that pier and?
Okay, so he was, he was just saying they want to do it in memory of him, two five-hundred dollars and that'll get rid of their account. But in the end, it was just great to meet an alumni who wants to continue to give back to students and just give them a little shot in the arm for their career. So just need to, need to meet him, so.
Very good. If there's no other business, we will move to adjourn at seven-thirty-four.